Okay, I'd like to open the Select Board Meeting February 8th at 6:30. Welcome everyone at home. This is our first live broadcast of a Selectman's meeting on our PEG channel. We want to give our thanks to all members of the Cable Advisory Committee, Tom Collier, John Nason, Al Afonso, and Lucinda Oates, as well as our technical consultant Brittany Blaney, and our staff for all their hard work that took place over the last sixteen months to make it possible to now have an active local public educational and government cable TV program. There will be many opportunities for the live or recorded broadcast of public meetings and town events moving forward. We'll be working with all of you to make this happen. We now have to make a formal announcement tonight and every meeting in the future that this meeting is broadcasted live and is being digitally recorded for future broadcasts. And now we're going to do some introductions.
Anita Shipers, Town Administrator.
Patrick Wright, Board of Selectmen, been on the board for approximately seven months.
Jeff Williams, Board of Selectmen, in my third year on the board.
Dan Galenti, Board of Selectmen Chair, third year on the board as well. Hi, Adia and Avery.
Rayanne Segal, a Board of Selectman member for two years.
Michael Stoudt, Board of Selectman member for six years.
Chedid Els, the Town Secretary.
Okay, thank you. I mean, while we're doing this, this is, we go up with Select Board Goals every year, and this has been one that's been on there for a while. It's been a long, long process to come to it, but we were doing this to further transparency, improve communication, all those things, especially we have a lot of important things going on in town right now, and it's just, this is only going to help. So, okay, let's get started. All right. Is anyone here for open session? Open session, yeah.
There's no formal discussion on it tonight, but if you have specific questions, maybe we could, you know...
Taking the open session.
Yeah.
Right. Should I consider it?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, the Planning Board is trying to determine if they are the appropriate permitting body for the permit that would be necessary for this project to take place. They're currently working with Town Council to make that decision as to, is it the Planning Board that actually would be providing a permit, or would it be the Board of Selectmen? Because the previous permit had been issued by the Board of Selectmen. So, we, probably it will take a few days before we get that final answer, and then we will be, the Chairman and I will be meeting with the Chairman of the Planning Board and discussing next steps based on what the Town Council opinion is.
It, well, let me just interrupt real quick. It really matters because that, that site has a lot of history. You know, it was in operation for so many years, so there were, there were old permits and things that were applicable when it was operated, as it was operated, as a gravel remover operation, and now things are changing, so we've got to make sure we're going through the proper channels.
Norman Brown, he said Lando, not a current guy, and we put forth a plan, and what the staff...
Well, we just gave it to you, and that's really where it's at. It's almost, you know, in town government right now, but it's almost out.
So, you know, please stay tuned, because, you know, if it ends up being a Planning Board issue, then those will be posted as public meetings, and you'll certainly be able to attend those. And if it gets to the point where it's appropriate for the Board of Selectmen to discuss it again, then, you know, we will be sending a letter out to all the Butters to let you know and encouraging you to attend that session.
What about the session we had mailed to all the Butters, the question and answer session?
Right.
I know we had canceled it, but...
We did, and, and that's the one that we'll look to try to reschedule. They had asked for a delay because they needed to pull together some more technical information before, you know, meeting with everyone. They felt that it would be more helpful for everybody involved that they had that additional information before we held that meeting with the area residents.
So that's still on the docket, but some kind of it in the future, hopefully?
We'll probably know more next week.
Any questions?
The Town was on a high range, you know, right?
Correct.
To make sure that they're compliant, so...
Right, and we've chosen an engineer, and we have a contract ready to execute, but we were waiting to get the opinion of Town Council before moving ahead with that. The contract is actually to do a peer review of all of the technical information that had been pulled together by Norman Brown's team, his civil engineer, his hydrologist, his LSP, because we want to make sure that, you know, we have an objective third-party review of all of that to make sure that there's agreement that, yes, the information that we pulled together is correct. Or not. Exactly. That's exactly why it was the...
We're going to be putting together a really comprehensive package to try to limit the amount of questions that we can't answer when we get to that point, so, you know, I, I think we, we're just our own body reviewing what they give to us, and we're going to have a professional deal to help us with that.
Thanks for your questions.
Anyone else open session? No, okay. All right, what's next?
Well, we have Joyce Green, our Town Secretary, who's the Town Clerk here. She needs to have the Board sign the warrant for the presidential primary, so perhaps because she's here, we could take her out of sequence and bring her up to the table now.
Good.
Hi, Joyce.
So, just a formality, sign these five copies. These have to be posted by...
Are we going to sign all of those?
Yeah, this five copies.
Sorry, what?
They have to be posted by next Tuesday, but we got plenty of time to fit them in, but it's the last meeting before that, so that's why I brought them. And Wednesday of this week is the last day of voter registration for the primary, so my office will be open until eight o'clock. I'm looking at anybody who needs to register to vote, or whatever, change their party address, or whatever.
Do we have a reminder on Facebook as well?
Yes.
There was a reminder on Facebook.
Yeah, and it was also sent along as notice, just...
We could probably do that again. I got to do, you know, for Boy, the Police Department, we have the next section on that one, is it, do this group too?
Oh, right, right, yeah. Five signatures, that's enough.
Sounds like watching paint dry.
That's six, that's an extra. That's okay. Extra's a good one. Thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is preliminary discussion about the FY17 budget, and I had put together a very early draft for you so that you could see where we stand at this point, but I wanted to have a chance to explain, not only for the Board, but for the audience present and viewing over TV, why the budget's going to be a little bit different this year than past years. When we had met with the bonding company, Standard and Coors, the Treasurer and I were informed that they want to see us properly account for any capital-related debt within the operating budget itself. And the reason for that is that when you obligate yourself for a bond, when you take out a loan, they want to be sure that we're 100% certain that we are going to be paying all the payments on that bond, that loan, with what they call recurring revenues, meaning it's money that we can guarantee that we're going to have every year, versus one-time money that we, you know, hopefully may be getting in that would be adequate to cover the fund. So rather than have us take free cash and any tax levy that we're able to, and put it into the capital stabilization fund, and then pay for those bonded items that we have under the capital program already, they wanted to see us take it out of the capital stabilization fund and put those items into the operating budget. So that means that we're now having our tax levy, our recurring revenue, so to speak, guaranteed to cover that debt. And so it's, it's a big change from the way it had been set up initially when the interim Town Administrator put the capital plan together, because we have some large-ticket items that were under the capital program, such as the large $1.3 million borrowing for the 2013 road pavement project. We have, we're still paying on Engine Three for the Fire Department, we're still paying on the roof project for the Quinnen Region Municipal District. So those items are now going to be built within the debt section of our operating budget, and in this instance, because we're still limited in our revenues, we don't have a lot of new growth, we don't have a lot of extra local aid that's coming through this year, it means that our operating budget is going to be squished down a bit until we can get past the point where we're paying for those certain loans that we had to pull in.
Does it affect interest rates at all?
It does not affect interest rates, no. What it, what it would do if we didn't make this change, when we go to get rebonded in a year and a half from now, then our bond rating would definitely suffer because we haven't made those appropriate changes.
Okay.
So I just wanted to explain that to the Board. So I'll just quickly go through it. We do have an actual budget meeting on the 22nd, so I don't want to spend a lot of time on this tonight, but just, you know, probably the best thing would be to look at the revenue expenditure projection sheet, which looks like this, rather than the full budget.
Yeah.
So you can see what we're projecting in terms of the property tax revenues. We have last year's property tax revenue, plus we have the increase that's allowed under the Prop 2.5 each year. Then we have what they're predicting will be our new growth, and when I say "they," I mean the Board of Assessors are predicting that we'll have only $35,000 in new growth for FY17.
What was last year's, do you remember that?
We used the same number.
Same number.
Yeah, so they, they're pretty much telling us it's leveled, and will be for a few years yet. The other numbers here, the debt exclusion is money that we put in as a revenue, because it is a tax that we receive as revenue, but we also have it in the budget itself, so it's basically budget neutral. Comes in on one side, it goes out on the other side. And you'll see there's some other potential items here that are being recommended by the Capital Committee, such as, you know, the potential of trying for the ambulance again, because it had failed in the past few votes. So that, this is how we're structuring the revenue and expense projections. We have 309, $640,000 of certified free cash, of which for this budget, to help us deal with the capital debt, I'm proposing to use 209,000 of that, and we'd have approximately $100,000 of surplus of free cash to save for future uses, and that's a very positive thing. And then we have, will be used, taking a transfer out of the municipal capital stabilization account, and then we have our projected local aid based on the Governor's budget. Right now, the first draft of the budget, because we're now pulling those debt expenses in, we're looking at $8,111,000, but this is an early number, and there'll be a lot of adjustment that's going to take place over the next few weeks. We still do not have final local aid numbers, we still do not have school assessment numbers. What I have here is making assumptions about those items right now. So I just wanted to give that quick discussion about the budget, and we'll be talking about it more in detail next, in our next meeting on the 22nd.
Okay.
The one thing I do want to add to that, though, is that we are in disagreement with DOR about what our certified free cash is actually going to be. According to our records, when we submitted the free cash certification request, the number should be $118,000 higher than what was certified, so our accountant properly touched base with our local rep at DOR. They admitted they made a mistake, we expected that they would be making the correction on the free cash number by now, they haven't, so I put in a formal request for them to make the change, because they did admit that it was a mistake on their part. So I'm hoping that will happen, but I'm not assuming it, so at this point, the number I'm working on is the lower certified free cash number, but if we're lucky, then they will do the appropriate number, re-certify our free cash to what it should be, and then we'll have additional funds to help with some of our capital expenditures.
Okay.
And that's it for the budget.
Okay, we have a license approval?
Two of them. One of them, I overlooked the common VIF license for the Pizza Palace, and we just need to sign that.
Yeah.
And then the other would be for Sterling Machine and Mold, they're in Florida, they're not open, but they had a delay in their paperwork, and I finally got it, and they need to have theirs signed, and they've complied with all of the requirements.
And where's that?
That's right, at the, where they sell pellets up there in the stones.
Oh, okay.
I think the front building is the machine shop.
That's not the place in the back, is it, that has the, she came before us last year for the cars?
No.
Thank you.
Appointments.
So the other appointment that we had on the agenda for tonight was the joint appointment of a new Cemetery Commission member, but the Cemetery Commission didn't have a quorum for tonight, so we're going to have to postpone that until the next meeting.
Okay.
Who's, who are we replacing?
Mrs. Goethe, and we have a gentleman who's fairly new to town, who's expressed strong interest, and he was, he attended one of the Cemetery Commission meetings recently, and they agreed that, yes, he'd be a good choice.
So what's the MMPO Regional Rep?
So, we need to go through the process of determining what the, our regional representative to the Monachusus Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MMPO, is going to be, and they have a very set process about how this happens. So each of the towns has to identify a, a member of the Board of Selectmen who will be the representative for Hubbardston within the subregion. So whichever one of you is voted to be that rep tonight, then goes to a meeting of all the other assigned representatives for our region. So we're in Subregion One, along with Athol, Petersham, Phillipston, Railston, Templeton, and Winchenden. So you would go to a meeting with all those other representatives, and then you would decide amongst yourselves who's going to be the final representative for Subregion One, and that person then, would then become the voice for all the towns in Subregion One moving forward.
Is this annual? I don't recall this before.
I think we've put it off because the meetings are like, I think I read it, is like the second Tuesday of the month at 1:00 in the afternoon, and generally, everybody's working at that time, so I think we've put it off because we were going to, I remember some discussion, we were going to appoint somebody outside the Board who's interested in all, but none of us can make it.
Technically, though, it is supposed to be a member of the Board of Selectmen, so because it is a difficult time, whoever our representative that would go to the, to the Subregion meeting would just say, "I'm Hubbardston's representative, but it's very difficult for me to be an active representative for Subregion One, therefore, you know, if there's someone else from another community that would be able to attend and would be an appropriate representative, then it, you know, that would make the best sense for the Subregion as a whole."
Of both communities acting as a...
Every group of communities, so there are seven communities in our subregion. We have to send at least one Selectman to this meeting to decide which town's rep is going to be the sole representative for Subregion One.
Do you know when the meeting is?
No, it gets, it gets scheduled based on the convenience of those members that get appointed by each town.
So we need to know by, or decide by February 26th?
Right.
So we can think it over and address it at our next meeting?
Sure.
Unless anyone wants to deal with it tonight?
I'd like to have more information. I mean, based on what you were saying, I'm the only one, basically, in that sense, it isn't going to be working at 1:00, but I have to be back here at certain points to get in and out of school, so I, I wouldn't even know time and place and where these things are going to be, because it's not convenient.
Here's the PowerPoint presentation about what it involves.
I've attached one to each one of the...
Okay.
Well, it's just, we don't have to decide right now.
But maybe between now and the next meeting, you can give it more thought, and if you, if you have specific questions that you'd like me to get answered for you prior to the next meeting, let me know.
Then we'll be happy to know.
I'm simply saying, you know, I, I do have obligations also, even if it's not worth...
I remember it was, it was a 1:00 meeting, I don't remember exactly what day it was, but it was 1:00 meeting on a certain, at least the, the main, the main meeting was, it was, but I don't, if this is just convenience of members, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe it will depend on what's convenient for everyone.
The next item was the Town Center Committee, and we have some potential changes to be made to that membership. There had been concern because two of the members who had been intended to be appointed, were appointed, however, were never formally sworn in.
They were asked several times, and we'd gone through a few different meetings, and it got to a point where we just said, you know what, we need to deal with it.
So since then, though, one of the two people has been sworn in.
Okay.
So Ernest Newcomb has been sworn in, so he is a viable active member, and we did not hear anything back from Tom Robinson, who was the Planning Board Representative. We do have one individual who is interested in being appointed to the committee, and I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing his name right, so I apologize. Nir Cohen. So he would not be a Planning Board Representative, however, he's not a member of the Planning Board.
He lives on Main Street. He was, he came to one of our meetings, a few meetings ago, and he does, I can't remember if it's Historical Commission, or he's, he's involved in some of that in town, and added great insight to it, so Bill, Bill Hanson had asked him to come to that meeting, and he came, and would like to make him a member.
So because we have, do we have a vacant at-large position?
I think we do for, actually have a large, a Main Street resident opening.
Okay.
Let me get motion to appoint him to the Town Center Committee.
I'll start in the... Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes. I'll have you initial it, Dave. The next item on the agenda is a series of updates, the first one being the Town Center Committee.
Yeah, so I've been doing this the last few meetings, so I'll just give you a quick update. The Town Center Committee, since we had last met, I had put together a survey for, which I think I'd mentioned at another meeting, but to get feedback from people on Main Street and general public. So we've got a few different ways how we're going to notify people of that. First one is tonight, so later on this week, we're going to set some other things in motion as far as putting it up on the message board, we're going to put it on the Town Facebook, put it on our own website, send it out via email with a Town email list we have, talk to the principal of Center School, she's going to send it out as an email as well, just kind of, kind of send it out there. It's either going to have hard copies, notification that there are hard copies here, the library and the other, the library basement, Town Offices, as well as there'll be a link to a Google Forms survey that's really easy to take care of, and, and it's just, we're going to get input. We've, you know, five or six months, we've been on this and needed to get some stuff going. That was the first one, and the second was, we had voted last meeting to come to the Board of Selectmen with a request for funding for a schematic design of Main Street. So that's actually in the, the budget that Anita had, had shown us before, and we had, in 2014, Melon McBroom had, had actually done this. They had done a, a cost estimate for schematic design of the reconstruction of Main Street, which is really just the infancy of, of that, the process that would be going through, which was going to take, you know, plenty of time. And it was $15,000 for that, and we asked Melon McBroom if that was still valid, and they, they said yes, however, to, to make sure that we're involved, meaning an engineering firm, which we won't have to use them, but there would be a couple of public meetings as well throughout the schematic design process, so we said, "I recommend carrying 20,000." So that's what we requested. So we all voted, it was unanimous within the Town Center Committee to, to go to the Board with that, and that's one of the things we'll be discussing, so. Hillville Road, you want to give an update on that?
Sure. At the end of January, Tim Kilhart, the DPW Director, and I went in to meet with the Mass DOT District Three Project Managers to find out what decision they had made in regards to helping us rebuild the Hillville Road Bridge. As you know, that we had met with them a year ago, almost, and they had agreed that they would try to help us, but they had been not very forthcoming in terms of what that meant exactly. So it was great to hear on January 29th that they definitely have decided that they are going to head and purchase, and they will install a timber bridge to replace the existing bridge on Hillville Road. So that's great news. It's, the bridge is being designed as we speak, and it actually has a notice to proceed for the construction of the bridge components, has already been given to the contractor, and Mass DOT expects that those bridge components will actually be delivered to the town, to the DPW Barn by March 21st. So that's great. So it really means it will happen this spring. What that means, then, is that the town would be responsible for doing the demolition of the existing bridge, and Mass DOT will be sending an engineer to oversee us doing that work, and we figure that would be a day, maybe two days of work. Temporary construction fence will be put around the entire area to make it safe until we can get the, the state's contractor in to actually do the, the repair of the bridge abutments, that concrete work on the, each side of the, the bridge, and then they'll install the new bridge components.
And the contractor, the state contractor, Mass DOT, because you might wonder why there's no, like, plans and specifications, or going out to bid or whatnot, Mass DOT in all different regions and divisions has sort of blanket scheduled emergency bridge contracts that go out every year with, you know, competitive bids, and so when a situation like this comes up, they don't have to go through that whole process, they have already awarded a contract to, to a contractor who can then step in.
So we're responsible for the demolition, setting up the temporary construction fence, and then once the bridge is in place, we're also responsible to pay for the installation of some additional guard rail that will come off the installed bridge to get it safely to the edges of the roadway, and then we're responsible for the pavement that will be going on top of the timber components. So that will likely be done through two existing state contracts, we'll just be paying for it.
Out of the account that was originally allocated.
The Chapter 90 account. So the, the great news in all this is that the bridge is intended to be rebuilt this spring, so we can get that road reopened for everybody in the area. The other great news is that it's saving us approximately $220,000 of Chapter 90 money by having the state come in and help us this way, because the last time we put this bridge out to bid, it was $280,000. And so, you know, we owe a huge debt of thanks to the state for helping us in this way. This is not a bridge that is under their responsibility, so for them to go out of their way to help us in this way is fantastic, and obviously, we'll be doing a lot to thank them and to acknowledge them, and getting out some good PR for them when we get to that point.
So is it up to us with the demolition out to bid?
We're actually going to be doing the work ourselves.
The highway's going to do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Tim discussed what we have for equipment with the Mass DOT engineer, and they said that absolutely, as long as there's a, a Mass DOT engineer there, shouldn't be any issue.
Yeah, that'll save some money.
She'll have their excavator, too.
Okay, Building Committee, this is the, the Senior Center Building Committee, Public Safety Complex Building Committee, that was, has been meeting every Friday for months now, it feels like, huh? So the, the update is, we, we now have all voted and agreed on this size moving forward. So basically, the size of the Senior Center to give to the architect to be able to, you know, there's a million tweaks that are going to happen, but we went through many meetings of, of paring it down from, it started at 6,500 square feet, we're in the 5,000-square-foot range, 25 to 30% smaller, and think that we want to provide a functional facility, and that's kind of the minimum square footage, to be able to provide the certain things that are required with a commercial kitchen and things like that. So we're now at that point where we have, we have a, you know, general floor plan that's going to be tweaked, and then we'll start to get more public involvement and all that. So that's where things stand, I guess, with the Senior Center portion of it, which, as a committee, our charge is to get to 100% design eventually with that, and, and perform some of the well installations, site development work, and all that sort of stuff with money that's already been allocated through the, the grant that we had. So that's, that's how that's moving forward. And then regarding the Public Safety Complex, which we, at last town meeting, allocated some additional money for a 25% or 30% schematic design?
25%.
25%, which is, which is, you know, a pretty, doesn't sound like too far down the road, but it is still pretty far down the road, to be able to give a good idea, to be able to present to the town of what the costs and, and plan would be for... to present to the town of what the costs and plan would be for that. So there's this, what's called program. And we did it for the Senior Center, which is, okay, what are the listed components? You know, there's a little wellness room, there's a bathroom, you know, that stuff. Those are, that's called the program. So we went through that process with the Senior Center, got to the point we're at now that I just explained. And we, starting Friday, are going to be going through program on public safety, which is, if it took us 15 minutes to understand it on Senior Center, it's going to take us two and a half hours to understand, 77 pages, because it has to do with, you know, setbacks, has to do with holding cells and all the specifics on that.
The mandated requirements.
Correct. So many more versus a Senior Center which has building codes and certain requirements, no doubt about it. But from what we're hearing, the public safety is, which just makes the cost high. So we don't have any of those numbers yet, but that's what we'll be, that'll be on the next update.
But the same thing, those items, there's no choice in those. You go ahead with it, you have to.
You do, but I don't know enough about the process yet because it has to do with the overall square footage of the building as well, which the first preliminary numbers we've seen are sort of ridiculous for our community. So we need to understand it more.
I think that one of the ways to help get over the space needed for those mandated items are to be realistic in terms of the square footage that each of them really need. And the police and the fire teams have been great at identifying where they can share spaces realistically, so that'll really help reduce the size of the facility.
So just in our last meeting, it came up, you know, whether the committee was going to recommend to the Board anything for upcoming, you know, within this warrant period that we're currently at, were we going to, as a committee, vote to say, you know, go after this or do we, we didn't get there yet. So, you know, over the next few weeks, we're going to, that's like agenda item, not number one, but it's, it's an important one that you'll be, you'll be seeing probably on our next meeting, because we know we have to get that soon. Okay. The QRSD Task Force, give a quick update here. We had another meeting last Wednesday maybe. And the last time I brought this up, we had begun the program of the Community Compact, which we had voted, you know, months ago and then reallocated what we were going for, which was to education and getting all the towns together to go to the state with this. Can you give a better update than that?
Sure. So just quickly to back up, for those who aren't aware, the state has a new program called the Community Compact Cabinet. And what the state is doing is that they're encouraging every city and town in the state to develop some best practices in key areas such as finances, economic development, long-range planning, what am I forgetting?
Education.
Education. And there's others. And they've identified what they consider to be best practice concepts in those areas. So the Board of Selectmen had previously agreed that they would sign up the Town of Harborsen to work on five-year financial forecast for the town, economic development, and develop additional regionalization opportunities. But we came up with this problem at the Quavon Region in terms of needing to work collaboratively amongst all five towns on this issue of the budget and budget projections. So Harborsen agreed to modify, to change our Community Compact application and take out the regionalization and instead put in this educational component. As of today, all four other towns have agreed to it.
Oh, awesome.
There's one town that still hasn't sent the formal paperwork in, but they have contacted the program manager to let them know that that's coming.
So when we get approved, which we already have preliminary approval...
We have verbally been approved.
And what we're going to be able to do is get professionals to be able to do the dirty work, research, to try to have us figure out, to think outside the box, to be able to sustain a school district, which, which when you project out the population growth, age, all that sort of stuff over 10 years, 20 years or whatever, it's not sustainable anywhere close in the current state. So, and it's a fair amount of money. I mean, you could talk to the money a little bit.
Well, we don't have a definite dollar amount limit that's been assigned to us as yet. But I do know that for the Town of Harborsen, just for the five-year financial forecast, they were going to be willing to give us between $20,000 and $30,000 for just that small task from one town. So when you consider that and you're looking at this much larger picture, that they're quite excited to work with the Quavon Region about, there's serious money that'll be applied to that. So the next step is, is that a subcommittee of this task force has been developed and we're going to be working on the scope of work that we'll then be sending out to consultants to get some cost estimates as to what it would cost for them to help us with some of these tasks that the committees, you know, have determined that we need to work on as we go forward.
And all the while, that's just one process that we're looking at for the QRSD Task Force. They're still looking at the schools, looking at, you know, bus routes, looking at all that sort of stuff as well. And, you know, I brought up during the last meeting was, you know, what precipitated this task force being formed in the first place was us getting all the towns together as boards and asking for a five-year plan. So not to, to not forget about that, you know, ask for it again. And, you know, this pushback's not the right word, it's, it's just because it's so difficult to predict for them, which we know, and that's why we went to them in the first place, as far as assessments and what the ratios that will be, you know, set by the state will be, which are unknown yet, they still agreed to put something together for us. So I think soon we're going to have something to look at, which is going to, it's going to be caveated all over the place, but I think it's a good first step anyway. It's what we started this process for. So, okay. That's it.
Okay, the next item is the Town Administrator's Report. And first item is the Selectmen's Annual Report. So the draft had been sent to each of you and in your packet tonight is the latest version of that that includes the few edits that I had been given. So I just wanted to see if the Board was ready to move ahead with submitting the report as presented.
I'll make a motion to submit the report as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. And then another question is, do we have any recommendations in terms of who we should dedicate the 2015 report to?
I forgot to think about that further. How about you?
I did. Claudia. She was instrumental in kind of getting this whole process for, for our Senior Center going and the land swap and everything else like that, so.
And the grant.
And the grant and organizing the seniors and everything else. I think it'd be a good, good recognition of her.
All right, I agree.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to have Claudia, have the annual report dedicated to Claudia for Venkile this year.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Jeanette and I will draft something to go and we'll send it to you and you can review it at the next meeting. Okay, thank you. We had been talking about the Complete Streets Program and I'd promised that we would look into it more to see whether it would be appropriate for us to try to apply this year for any grants under the program. So Tim Kilhart and I met and we reviewed all of the FY17 requirements under the program and it readily became apparent to us that this is not something that we could actually proceed with a grant application for this year. I included the deadline of the different action steps that are necessary to be completed in order to be eligible to apply and there's just, it's not feasible for us to get to that point for this year. But we do think that it's worth, you know, continuing to look at this. And what I'm suggesting is that we actually put together a workshop specifically for this Complete Streets Program, perhaps in May when we get, you know, beyond most of the bulk of the budget planning for the year. It's, it's a way for us to identify the types of improvements that will go on certain streets in our town. So there's a lot of thought that needs to go into it because we have to identify which roads those would be. The important thing to remember is that once you've decided you're moving ahead on this and a street has been designated as a complete street location, we can't back out of that. So, you know, we have to be very careful in terms of deciding, is this appropriate for any of our roads? And if it is, which roads would it make sense to move ahead with?
We're going to comment on the next Town Center Committee meeting we have as well. This information's been sent out on that. And it's not just, you know, it's like 12 and a half million dollars annually is available here and it's not just for construction, it's for design and all that stuff. So just based on what I said, the update for the Town Center Committee before, it seems to fit sort of perfectly in for us to comment.
I've already given you the Hillville Road update, so I'll pass on that. And the last item is the MIA Risk Management Award. The town won an Excellence in Risk Management Award at last month's MMA Annual Conference. And the award basically is meant to recognize the fact that Harborsen, of the, one of the few, of the many members of MIA, we've been in the program for 26 years and in that 26 years, we have only had 68 claims held against the town and only $120,000 in claim payout over that period of time, which is fantastic. I mean, some communities get $120,000 in claims payout in one year. So for the community to, you know, have such careful control over losses in our insurance coverage is fantastic. So it was, it was great to see that the town received recognition from other communities in our success on that. In FY16, we're still continuing to look for as many possible loss control credits as we can. Our staff go to training, we improve policies and procedures every year and all those things count towards credits that we can put toward next year's insurance premiums. So it really, it is a good program and I think Harborsen is using it to its maximum benefit. And that's it for my report.
Next item we already did, which was announcing of the Town Center Survey, as I said, the different ways it's going to be distributed and, you know, encourage everybody to take part in that process. There'll also be drop boxes off at each of the locations where the hard copies are as well. So it'll just be something, you could, you know, it'll take a few minutes to fill out and it'll help our committee out a lot.
The next item is, we have a request from the Girl Scouts to allow a food drive box to be placed in one of the town offices inside for their annual food drive. Jeanette, maybe you could give more details on that.
It's a community project. It is a local Girl Scout troop and they're looking to put an 18 by 12 inch box either here in this building or next door in the library through May. They will pick it up every week. They will have one of the Girl Scout troop leaders will come in on a weekly basis. So just looking forward.
Anyone against the Girl Scout food drive?
Would it be better there or in the library? It's a good point.
I'll make a motion to approve the Girl Scout food drive.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and we'll work to figure out what the best location is.
Okay, ask something, not on the agenda, so we may have to add it for the next time, but the 250th Committee has asked about if they need approval for a raffle. So they have a fundraising subcommittee has a plan for the next 18 months or so to make some money to do the 250th Party and they want to do a raffle. I believe it's in March, next month, in association with the play. They're going to get prizes donated and I think at the play, people are going to buy tickets and they'll get the prizes. Do they need approval? Is that something we can do tonight or is that something they have the charge to do with the 250th Committee?
Didn't we already approve a raffle?
We approved a raffle that they...
Blanket approval or was it just that?
I think we just approved that one raffle that was submitted, but they never did.
Let's, let's revote it just to be safe and we might want to make it a conditional vote based on whatever approvals might be needed through the town clerk, because I think she does have authority to review things like raffles.
I think so.
But we did, you know, settle how, what the process is to spend any money, right?
Yes.
Early on, so, you know, I don't really think we'd get, get in trouble, not in trouble, but you know, I...
And then I don't believe they're spending money other than maybe buying raffle tickets, you know, but I think that they're getting prizes donated.
No, I'm just concerned that I think the town clerk has to approve raffles in the community. So I would just ask you to make a conditional to check to make sure that it's okay by the town clerk. Maybe that she, that she's not involved in that process, in that case your vote is still fine.
Okay.
But it would be conditional upon getting the approval of the town clerk if needed.
Thanks, I'll make a motion to conditionally approve the 250th Committee fundraising effort for a raffle in March.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Be nice to, you know, not anytime real soon, I guess, but to set a date during one of our future meetings, spring or wherever, to get an update from them.
Okay. You can check with the chair and see what works for them.
All right.
I do know that I just received an email from them asking, I believe it was for $7,500 to go toward fireworks. Apparently the committee was concerned that they were late in fundraising efforts and that they wouldn't have time to raise that much money for fireworks. So they have submitted an article, which I'll be bringing before you with the article as for town meeting when we get to that point, but just to let you know that came in today.
Yeah, they have a, maybe just a quick overview just because Pam's on the, on the committee. So they did set up a fundraising subcommittee and they have a plan mapped out every single month. I don't know what, exactly what the plan is. I know it's starting off with this raffle during, supposed to have a play, but they have fundraising events every single month up until the time of the 250th Party. And I believe right now their plan is to just kind of have a one day or one weekend thing with parade, big festival at the, at the fields and somehow put some fireworks at night, either at the fields or up on Mount Jeff, somewhere that the town has some land and do it that way. So that's, that's the, kind of the direction they're heading.
Okay.
We have some minutes from November 2nd that need to be. Jeanette and I are trying to get caught up in old minutes, so you're going to see odd dates coming through.
Were we all there?
Sure.
I'll still make a motion to approve November 2nd meeting.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
There's no discussion under Old Business for the Pitchfield Center in gravel other than the comments and questions we had earlier.
Soon there will be, I think, right? Does it feel like we're close to getting a direction?
Yep. Perhaps even as early as our next meeting, we'll be able to speak, you know, with a little bit more detail in terms of what's going on at their level, meaning at the proponents level. And we'll certainly have the question answered by then in terms of who really is the permitting authority under the gravel permit operation.
Okay.
Okay, public press and questions?
Anyone?
No one present.
I do want to mention, we do have a meeting Thursday. A board meeting Thursday?
Yes, there's an extra Selectmen's meeting scheduled for this Thursday, that is the 10th.
11th.
11th.
11th, thank you. So Thursday...
Is it an open meeting or executive session?
Open meeting.
And it would be 6:30 PM.
The agenda item is to go over our streets, snow and sanding and icing process, you know, for the most recent storm as well as throughout the season so far.
In terms of the protocols, are they working or are they not working? Where do we need to make additional improvements? What are the concerns that are out there?
Yep.
Okay. And we do have the executive sessions for tonight. We have, under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, we have exemption two to discuss collective bargaining with non-union personnel, under exemption three to discuss strategy with respect to union collective bargaining, and also for litigation. So we need to have a motion.
I'll make a motion for exemption two and exemption three to go into executive session.
And then adjourn.
And then to adjourn with no further public, public period.
I'll second it.
Okay, we need to have a roll call vote. Pat?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.